Good evening. This is the June 27, 2018, meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the town of Newcastle. Secretary.
First case is Curly.
Evening, Tom Curly, 45 Innewood Road. And I have to admit, I think that I'm like, I'd assume there'd be a screen here this evening. And... Oh, is that right? Because everything is right here. It's really, really good. So I'll just have to wave my arms.
We have the plan.
Okay. Great. I know you do. So I'll just give it a shot here. Just a minute on the history of the property, which I think is kind of interesting. Across the road from us, Innewood Road, you may know as a Newcastle Stanwood Pumping Station for the new croton aqueduct. And that is also was a construction site in 18, early 1890s to build the aqueduct. The shafts are there for construction. There are also shafts for the pumps. And back in 1890, the way they did these things was with mules. So they had to build a barn. And the barn is across the street. And the center two-story piece you see in these drawings and images is actually the shell of the old barn. And over time, additions have been put on to make it a, to make it a house. I think the first record in town for it as a residence is 1893, or at least the construction of the building was 1893. And everything that's been done in addition is in the town records, so it's, it's all okay. The aqueduct actually runs down our driveway, bisects our property. And when they built it, the barn, they also built a well out back, which is abandoned now. So that with the, with the additions and what you see there is essentially the house we bought. We haven't put any additions on it. In the meantime, there had also been, before we bought the house, a swimming pool built with a pool house, and a chicken coop a long time ago out back, and also a separate three-car garage. So those are essentially the structures on the property. We abandoned the pool a long time ago, just because we weren't using it, so we filled it in. The, and we had to take down the chicken coop because it was falling down. It was just dangerous. But all the other structures are still on the property. It's our intention to take down the pool house. The pool house is actually a pumping station for the pool. It's a pump, a pump house for the pool. We intend to take that down as part of the demolition of the project. So you'll see in the, in the, I don't even have drawings, I apologize. You'll see in the drawings, it's probably, hopefully evident from the photographs also, that there is an existing screen porch, which is on the east side of the building, which you can see from the road. It's a one-story screen porch, which is about almost 300 square feet, a little less, I think. And we use that every summer. We've been on the property for 25 years, and we live out there in the summertime. And for a long time, we've always sort of said, wouldn't it be great to actually make this a year-round room with a fireplace in it, so we can sit in there in the wintertime as well? And we're ready to do that project. We've got a contractor. We have drawings, as you see. And, but not only replace it in kind and footprint, but if we're going to do this, let's make a bigger room that can serve not as sort of a smaller room outside, but like a great room outside. So we could put a dining room sort of set in there, and then a living room set in there also, and use it as a year-round, as a year-round room. So the projection to make that bigger goes out towards the back. It doesn't go towards the road. Of course, it goes toward the back, and it goes out an extra 12 feet with an extra, about a three-foot porch on top of that. And the, the interior ends up being in the neighborhood of about 480 square feet, as opposed to the lesser square footage. So there is an ask for greater square footage. The front yard setback is 75 feet. The building clearly, you know, was put there before. And I think that the actual setback of the building now is around 13, 14 feet. We don't intend to move, to, to, to do anything towards the road or towards the east. Everything would be towards the north, towards the back of the property. And so our hope is that, first of all, the building's grandfathered. Second of all, there's already the footprint of a structure there. Now, I understand it's not actually an enclosed structure. It's, it's a porch, right? It's not a house. It's not really a building. So I understand there's a special consideration there. But it'd still be one-story. And we think that, as a result of doing this, the architecture of the proposal would actually, we think, contribute more to the neighborhood than its porch does. And we have, I think, we've submitted images of the adjoining neighbors. And I guess that's a summary. If there's anything you'd like to know more.
How close are the adjoining neighbors?
There is, geez, I have a... Yeah, thanks.
I have a, got a blue word, but I can't see it. But there are...
Outside.
Is there a location plan? I think I can...
Is this what you meant?
Yeah, that's not going to be very helpful, is this one?
No.
Okay, let me see if I can describe it. Across the street, upon the street, across, that's all we have.
Could I just ask you to take the microphone, too?
Yes, of course. Yeah. Thank you.
So this is actually something you guys published for public notice. So this is us, obviously. The pumping station is here. There is a two-story family home here. There is a one-story, this, this, this house is actually an old Sears Roebuck house here. So you probably imagine the architecture of that. This is a raised ranch over here. And then the next adjoining houses are actually way back here and way back here.
But those are the houses that are closest to this improvement that you're making?
Yes. The improvement is, would be right here. So it's these two houses, the pumping station, and these guys are way back. Now admittedly, it's a prominent location from the road, so it's not like the, nobody's going to see it other than these neighbors. It's, it's a feature of, of the road, like all the homes are.
But the construction is going to go back, though.
It's going to go back towards the back.
Back of the house.
Away from the road, straight back.
Because right now, you, you see three windows of the, of the porch, right now, from the road?
Right. Let me see if I can find the view from the road. I think it's in here. One more. Here.
Is this it?
That's the view from the road. That's the front of the house, and that's the porch right now.
Right, okay.
And so this facade of the, of the new addition would exactly match that dimension.
Okay.
And it would be, that corner would be the same corner. And the other, this is facing, we're looking to the north elevation now? I'm sorry, looking to south elevation now. The east elevation would be in the same location also. And so the larger part of the addition would be, sorry. Ah, here you go. This might describe it better. So now we're sort of around to the north side of the house.
Right.
Right? And you see the porch.
Right.
So what would happen, what's proposed, is you see this wing over here, which is actually the office study?
Yeah, yeah.
This new addition would come out to the face of that one.
Okay.
So they'd match each other, right? In terms of massing. And it would project due north in that direction. Not only on the east wall, but also on the west wall. So it's really just coming out 12 feet further to the north, is the proposal.
And you're not doing anything with the middle?
Well, we're going to put a patio in there.
Okay.
The, see, the other, the other situation we have now is that you come in the house from the driveway through a door, and to get into the main living area, you have to go through the kitchen. It's been that way for 25 years. It's been that way for longer than that. It's just the way that thing was laid out. And so, I'm sorry, so what we'd like to do is to, when we do this, to actually make the walkway from the driveway go by this facade and go directly into the new main room, so that becomes the formal entry.
So I'm looking at the, the main survey on it, I guess the site plan. And what I'm seeing here is that the entire existing structure is outside of setbacks now. It's all non-conforming.
The entire thing. It's also in a 150-foot wetland setback as well.
Right, okay. But, and so, everything here is currently non-conforming, legal. What you're proposing is, you're not changing the existing dimensions, except in one small respect? And how many feet would that be?
In, in dimension, it would be 12, in, in length, in length, it'd be 12 feet out and 16 feet wide.
But is that within the same?
Footprint?
Footprint?
No. It's an addition.
So it's an addition.
It's lawn there now.
Okay, all right.
It's to make the room bigger.
Okay. But it doesn't look like it is substantial from the standpoint of the, the entire structure and, and the way it's situated and, and the way it's seen from the road or anything else. It's, to me, it looks like it's a extremely innocuous change.
It's going to make our lives a lot better, but in terms of what your concerns are, I would agree, right?
Extremely. So, you know, I'm...
Just to clarify one point, and I understand you're legally existing non-conforming, and we've done this before, and there's nothing you can do about it.
I'm sure you have.
You picked up the house and moved it and everything.
We've done it also in the planning.
But our job, our job should we decide to grant this, is to grant the minimum variance possible for you to achieve.
Sure.
Your desired end. But I have a question, because on your application, you're saying that you have, you, you want to be 19 feet from the front yard, but on the plan, it shows 21 feet. Which one is correct? And why is, why is there a discrepancy?
The discrepancy is that when I reviewed the drawings before I came to, informal review with the building department, the gentleman's name was Bruce, I think that he was temporary. I'm not sure he's, he's with us anymore. I think there's somebody permanent. But he suggested that, for reasons of what happens in construction, he just said, maybe what you ought to do is just ask for a couple of more feet, just to be sure that you are in a situation where if something happens, you don't have to go back to zoning board or you build it and you're in non-conformance with the approval.
Okay, we've done that, we've done that before. I just wanted to get it on the record, why. And if it's okay with the building department, then we'll leave it at the 19 feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
That's the only reason. I mean, it is where we want it to be. We know where it's going to be in the ground. He just wanted to make sure there might, wouldn't be a problem.
Perfect, understandable. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? No. Any other questions, Bud Ward?
No.
I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Okay, sorry, Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, excuse me. I didn't get there quick enough. We're still in the process, right now, I'm in the drawings of the drawings. But we're still in the process of thinking that if we lock ourselves in, not to make the building any bigger, but in terms of the coverage of a non, non-pervious surface, like extending a patio or extending a walkway. If there is anything of what you all decide tonight, which would prevent us from going back, because we'd have to be changing the coverage, is there, sometimes I know in the planning board will, I think it's typical for the town, I don't know for your dr, for what you guys do, but to give like a 15 percent, especially on coverage, a 15 percent grace. Now, that's a new development. I'm not sure it's an additions. And I'm not sure that would apply here. But I thought I should ask the question.
So we've never heard anything like that before in our existence?
Right.
And it's not the way this board operates?
Okay, that's fine.
But, but looking at your, your, your coverages, you'd have to do something quite significant for it to impact any of these thresholds.
And the numbers are pretty benign, I think.
Yeah, you're pretty well-covered there.
Right.
No pun intended on the coverage.
Have a lot of leeway, but...
That was good.
You have a lot of leeway in, in development coverage. But if it's within, if it's outside of the setbacks, will he still need to come and make an application?
I, I don't think if he's not, if he's not moving within where the variance is, if it's a 20, if he's allowed a 20-foot variance, unless you...
With his future?
No, I know, but unless you include a condition saying he can't increase the size within that variance, you know.
So...
It would be dependent on where the structure was located, I guess, you know.
So, I'm sorry, let me just be clear. I'm not talking about increasing the building size.
You're talking about patio or something?
I know that you can put patio, I know you can put impervious surface in a, in a, in a yard setback. So I wouldn't be asking for encroachment in the yard, because I think there's a matter of right to do that. What I'd be asking for is just increase in the coverage numbers that are represented and approved in the, hopefully approved in the application.
You're not approving the coverage?
We're not approving coverage.
Because you're not asking for a variance with respect for coverage, so...
Don't need one, right?
Right, you don't require one, so...
Okay, got it.
Tonight, you're just dealing with your front yard variance request.
Got it. Very good. So it's a different venue for that? Okay, good.
Well, I think there would just be a building issue if you wanted to add a, you know, impervious, if you wanted to change the plans, that would be part of the building.
That would be a separate variance if he's going beyond the setback.
I'm not going beyond the building coverage. It's in the drawings, which would be hopefully approved here.
But if you're, if you're talking about extending a patio?
Right.
Right? And you're not going beyond the allowable development coverage, but the patio is going to be located outside of the legal setbacks, even though you have an existing non-conforming, you might still need an application.
Right. You'd still need a permit and an application for a variance change if you go within that 20 feet.
To build a, to build a walkway?
Yes. Back in 1995, that code changed. Now, walkways are different than patios or terraces. So you're allowed to have a walkway.
Okay.
And there are constraints to that. But to build a terrace that's going to be a size, then you would be visiting us for permit for that and a variance.
Okay, well, we'll cross that bridge if we need to.
It shouldn't be a problem. It's just the...
It's time.
The, the trouble of making the application.
It's time, right. Thank you. Okay, very good, thanks. Pardon for the interruption.
I move that we close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion. I move that the Curly application for a front yard variance of 56 feet to deconstruct a screened-in porch and replace it with a new enclosed structure of approximately 400 feet. This is a pre-existing non-conforming. There will be no undesirable change producing character to the neighborhood. The benefit cannot easily be sought through other means or methods. The variance is substantial. The variance will not have an adverse vector impact on the physical environment. This was a self-created circumstance. These reasons you'll have, and there are no, no neighbors to speak in opposition. You'll six months to start, one year to complete, and we will need a, you're going to put a new foundation in?
Yes.
So you need a foundation survey?
Yes, I do.
Yep. Prior to getting started.
Can we just confirm the size of the variance that the board is granting? Is it going to be?
56 feet.
56? Well, the variance, yeah, the variance is going to be 56 feet. Okay, so that's for 19, so that's...
19 feet from the, from the front yard.
19 feet from the line, okay.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Panditch?
Good evening. I'm Mary Scott, representing Suzanne and Richard Panditch, who are here tonight. We are seeking four variances. The Panditch home was built in the 1930s as part of four homes that are clustered around a parking circle that extends off Quaker Road. And they're non-conforming. Panditch's property is .33, and it's a half-acre zone. So every property there is non-conforming in some way. We are looking to legalize an existing shed, which is, and in addition, there are actually two front yards, because we have Mark Court, and then we have Quaker Road down here. And even though we're setback a whole property from Quaker Road, this line becomes a front yard setback. So it's a small shed. I will pass this around. You can see the picture of it. It's four feet from the front in one direction, 18 feet from the front on the Mark Court Although it's relatively close to the neighbor, the neighbor's garage is what faces it, so, and the house is beyond that. So you can see the shed's here, the garage is here, the house is here, so there's no sightline from the house to the shed. The other part of the project is, is an existing open porch that we want to replace with an enclosed dining room. And for that piece, we're okay on the front yard setback, but on the rear yard setback, we're at 35, where 40 is required. So that requires a single set, a setback. The fourth variance is for coverage, because we have a driveway going in, and once again, because it's a non-conforming lot, it cuts down on the amount of usable coverage, and we have the hardship of a quarter of the circle being counted as impervious coverage for this property. So I'll pass this around. We feel that the design of the addition is in keeping with the house and with the other cottages in this group.
I didn't know that.
This shed is quite small and really is kind of, it's, it's protected from Mark Court by plantings and by the neighbor. There are plantings and the garage, as I said.
When was the shed erected?
There's been a shed on the property for over 30 years, maybe 40 years now.
In this shed, or some version of it?
Well, there was, there was another shed that fell down and was placed in the same location with a smaller shed, actually, but...
Give us the microphone.
Yeah. Microphone, you got to come up.
You could introduce yourself to us, please.
Suzanne Panditch. The original survey, when we moved, when we bought the house, showed a shed on the property. From what we can tell, there's been a shed there for, ooh, a long time. But when we moved there, there was a shed in that location. It was run down and kind of, you know, so we decided to knock that one down and actually brought in a smaller one, which we put in a very similar location, so...
How long ago was that?
That's four or five years ago, maybe? So we replaced the shed that had been there.
And you also have a generator, right, that...
Yeah, we did, we...
...variance for...
Yes, about, about a year or so ago.
And that is in your front yard?
Michael's.
Well, it's, it, I can't figure out what a front yard and a side yard is, because it's on the Mark Court side.
Right, okay.
And there's a big elevation change when you go from our house to Mark Court. And there's a huge wall and everything. On that side, you can't see anything.
So you're getting rid of your porch?
Yeah, we have a roofed porch that's there now, and was there when we moved in. And we're looking to sort of enclose that same porch.
You're not changing the footprint of the porch, correct?
It extends back a little bit, about five feet.
You're increasing the size?
We are increasing the size.
Oh, I see that, okay.
It's just too narrow for a functioning dining room. But it, it, it doesn't extend past the existing house setback.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? Please come forward.
It's those nasty next-door neighbors.
Yeah.
I'm Gray Williams.
You could, you could pull that down towards you, sir.
I'm Gray Williams. We live at 376, which is the direct next-door neighbor. We are the ones most impacted by this addition. I mean, it's directly in our line of sight. We support the application. We feel that the variances that are requested will actually improve the neighborhood and make it more desirable for all of us. We also feel that the changes desired are in keeping with other changes, including to our property, for sure, good enough to approve, which have made our homes more livable and have improved their value.
Mary, all your numbers, no, no, wait a second now. All your numbers are good for your requested variances, but you chipped yourself on the FAR, which doesn't impact your application at all. But I'm going to have it corrected. Your, your maximum permitted number was 2950. It's actually 3245. So that gives you a little, a little more leeway. If you ever do anything again, we should have this...
We ever do a second story?
We should have, well, you never know. We should have it in the record.
Okay.
And, and your proposal is 1730 rather than 1742, so our secretary will fix that, which is going to help your client someday in the future.
Okay.
But the other numbers are great, this bunch.
Okay, thank you. I think you need a hobby.
I'm good. Nope, I'm good.
Good over here. I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion. Move that we approve the application of Richard and Susan Panditch, 378 Quaker Street, for two front yard variances for an existing shed, rear yard variance for the replacement of an existing porch, and a, and a new dining room, and a development coverage variance for a single-family resident, for the entire single-family residence. For the following reasons. The requested variances are, let's see, what's the footage?
You can, here. You can read about this, I guess. And Mary's...
You can get in and put the footages on the...
Oh, here, do you want the letter?
Yeah. All right, so it's a front yard reduction from 50 feet to 4 feet for the purpose of legalizing the existing shed. A front yard reduction from 50 feet to 18 feet for the purpose of legalizing an existing And a rear yard reduction from 40 feet to 35 feet for the purpose of replacing the existing open porch with a new dining room. And a development coverage variance from 4,0490 to 4,0620, which includes the existing driveway and terrace, as well as walkways, house and shed. Variance total of 130 square feet for the following reasons. The applicant has shown how the requested improvements are going to benefit the, both the applicant and the neighborhood, and are minimal.
One more point. It may be easier if you address the shed variances in one format, and then the other, the coverage and the variance for the house in a separate, sort of as two separate categories. I think it might, might work more appropriately.
Shed variance with the two front yards?
Right, the two front yards for the shed, and then the ones for the, one for the coverage. You know, I think it may just simplify, it may express the matter a little more directly, so. They're really two different issues.
Well, applicant has shown that the, the shed has been there for many years, without any objections from any of the neighbors. It has been reduced in size over the years, and provides a benefit to the applicant, is not visible, nor has, have the neighbors objected. They have, in fact, said that they're in approval. So notwithstanding the substantial nature of the, of the, of the requested... requested variance for the shed, the granting is, will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties, nor the feasible method is available to the applicant, which is likely to achieve the benefits sought. And we've indicated that it is a substantial variance, but the other factors outweigh that factor. Will not have a, an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition of the neighborhood or district. And the applicant purchased the property with the shed in place, so it's not really a self-created hardship from that standpoint. With respect to the variance for the roof over the porch, over the patio, I mean, converting the patio into a dining room addition and the slight addition to the setback, that is currently in the same position as the existing structure except for a five-foot extension, which is minimal. No neighbors have written in opposition. They are in approval of the granting of the variance. They have indicated that they believe it would improve the character of the neighborhood and not be a detriment to nearby properties. No other feasible method is available to the applicant for that benefit. And the variance is not substantial and will not have a, an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. With respect to the development coverage, the applicant has indicated that they are impeded by the fact that they share a traffic circle. And because of that nature of the property, which is somewhat unique, their development coverage is restricted substantially. And without it, without having to include the circle, you wouldn't need the...
Correct.
The variance. So the neighbors are not in opposition to this. And the requested variance of the development coverage is... will not create an undesirable change to the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties, nor the feasible method is available, which is likely to achieve that benefit. The variance is not substantial and will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. So for these reasons, I move that we approve the application. We'll need a foundation survey or are you going to put a new foundation in the...
Yes.
Okay, foundation survey. Six months to start, a year to complete.
I second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Second, have your variance.
Thank you.
Ousmani is next.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members. My name is Vincent Maschermarco, consultant with Trevor Spearman, architect representing Mr. Ousmani, the owner of the property on Four House Lane.
Before we get started, sir?
Yes.
Unless I'm unaware of this being a special section of town, your application says that sixty foot is a required setback? And it is not, it's fifty feet?
I believe it's fifty feet, correct.
Yeah, but you've written sixty on the application?
I think when Mr. Spearman filed the applications, I think they had originally thought it was sixty, but then we learned it was actually fifty.
And also on your coverage calculation, you doubled up your numbers, which you didn't need to do, so.
Oh, okay.
I'll give it to our secretary, she'll fix it.
She'll fix it, great, okay.
It's just, it's just that for the record, I think they should be right.
Definitely, I agree.
I understand what you're doing and the numbers come out right, but you wrote them double and it shouldn't be that way.
Thank you, I agree.
Sorry to interrupt, continue.
So basically, it's a, the owner would like to... I'm guessing everybody has this drawing in front of them?
Yes.
The owner would like to build a shed to house his firewood, to protect it from rotting and anything else. The shed will be a well-built, custom, stick-built construction and will match the siding and the roof shingles. The only variance that's required here is the rear yard, as you mentioned. We have a setback of twenty-four feet. I mean, I'm sorry, we have the shed at twenty-four feet and a variance would be for twenty-six feet. We are considerably far away from Bedford Road, sixty, I believe, eighty-nine feet. And there's a row of evergreens. There is a stream down the property. We're about thirty feet away from the, from the shed.
How did you go about selecting the location to place the shed?
The owner actually currently has a concrete pad there, where he has his pile. And he's got this wonderful bright blue tarp that covers the wood. You could all see that bright blue. So basically, that's why we want to build a shed, to enclose, enclose the wood and match the, and match the house. Mr. Spearman had met with Steve Coleman. I don't even know if that's you, sir. On this... Oh, that's not you. He met on the site informally and Mr. Coleman had suggested putting some plantings in front of the shed, which we have done, which is shown on the drawings. Also spoke about putting in some check dams, one or two, which we also have done, and to call out for a no-mow zone in front of the, in front of the stream, which we also are calling out for. We know that a wetlands permit would be required, and I guess that's why Mr. Coleman had suggested those. And that was probably, would probably be more for that board, so.
So has he seen your recommendations?
I believe, it was informally, but yes. So these were, we took those and added to the drawings, so. I don't think there's anything more. I think it's a simple application.
Where are the neighbors who might write?
The... It's, it's, I don't know how far it is, but it's in the back here. I think that you might be able to see it in one of these pictures.
So Mr. Coleman seems interested in screening the shed from Old House Road.
Correct.
But it's not necessary, in your estimation, to do any screening as it relates to neighbors?
You can see the blue tarp and you can see the home in the back. It's considerably far away. And then it's a corner lot, so he's on Bedford Road, which is, it's blocked by evergreens.
Are there any neighbors in the audience who wish to speak to this application?
So the only reason he wants it in that location is because there's a...
The slab is already poured and that's where the current stockpile is. And yeah, so we just wanted to just enclose it there. It's also located...
Is the slab big enough? I mean...
Yes, it's a twelve-by-twenty slab. We're just going to build...
You're building a twelve-by-twenty shed?
Twelve-by-twenty shed, yeah. It's on that drawing.
Is it better for the wood to be enclosed than under a tarp?
Yes, for appearance, obviously, but yes, for rotting purposes as well, sure. There will be no electricity in the shed as well. It's just going to have maybe some solar lights. We also, the shed is also set in that location because it's also aligned with the back of the house, more or less. We didn't want to put it in the front yard, you know, in front of the house or on the side of the house. It's set back enough.
You said he requires, is going to require a wetland permit for this?
Yes.
Was there a wetland permit required for the slab?
Twenty-six foot.
Twenty-six, right.
No. His rights for that and for the, and for the tarp, actually.
When was the slab installed?
I think it was last year, but I'm not certain.
Steve, Mr. Coleman didn't have an issue with the slab being there, huh?
No.
He doesn't issue violations, does he?
Well, we'll make it a condition that Mr. Coleman review and approve the...
I think that's a good idea, yeah, that the requirement shown on this plan be either part of a condition to this application or to the wetland permit. And that the obtaining of a wetland permit also be...
Right, that's going to be presumed, right.
...a condition to this application, right.
Anything else by the board? Move that we close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion?
Move that we grant Osmond, Ousmani, a variance, a twenty-six-foot rear yard variance for the installation of a shed. Granting the variance will create no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The shed could be placed in other locations, but it appears that there's already a concrete slab in this location. And it's, it appears that it's a good location for the homeowner to store his wood. I don't believe, in light of the size of the property, the variance is great or substantial. And the variance will have no adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. This is a self-created hardship, however. But for those reasons, and also I want to add that this approval by this board would be subject to the approval by the Wetland Commission or permit.
Yep.
That must be obtained also.
Yep.
For those reasons, I move that we approve the application.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, you say when he would be starting and finishing?
Well, I, six months to start, one year to finish.
Okay. Well, approval from the wetlands, though, right? Because that could take, I don't know how long that would take, the approval on that.
It would be from the date of this approval, actually.
It would?
It would be the day from, I assume you can get an approval from wetlands pretty quickly. You're not building a house.
Right, right, okay.
Within six months, you should be able to start.
And you already met with Mr. Coleman, so that should be favorable.
Correct. So six months to start, one year to finish.
If you require any additional time, you would just need to send us a letter saying why you need additional time, yeah.
Extension, okay.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ajumdar?
That slab, and I don't think that's...
That's not legal.
Good evening. My name's Troy Wojcickowski, engineer for the applicant at Mahumdar's, nineteen Random Farms Drive. The application before you tonight is for two variances, a side yard as well as the total side yards. This project actually involves, before you, an addition, a twelve-and-a-half by fifteen-and-a-half-foot addition to the rear corner of the house. However, that was part of a larger application that was approved conditionally by this planning board last month. That also included a pool and a patio. The existing home is actually nonconforming. Pretty close, but just nonconforming. Brought the site plan, we'll color it up for you. These are the yard setbacks. And as you can see, the house was constructed basically on the side yard. And at this rear corner here, it's an inch over, so they just missed. But then, as you add the total side yards, they missed by more on that. I think the house is built in the eighties. As you can see here, the green is the proposed location of the addition. It's a first floor and second floor addition, so you'll still have the walkout condition from the basement level. I included some photos of the house as it exists, from the side and from the rear. As you can see from your site plan, the addition actually wouldn't be visible from the street. Really would only be visible from the next door neighbor, the Odets. There's a pretty significant wooded, called a buffer, along the property line, shared between the two properties. I actually worked on that a few years ago. But again, it's not something that's an eyesore. Basically, instead of being one inch over existing, the new addition, because of the skew of this, would be about four inches over the setback. So we'd be looking for a variance of, I guess, from twenty to nineteen feet, I think. And then whatever the sum of the two side yards would be. That's all I have, unless you want me to go through some pictures or if you have questions.
What would be contained within the addition?
I believe they're making their bed, just the master bedroom. They're making that larger, so they're pushing the bathroom back, at least on the one floor. And I think that that's the second floor. The first floor, I believe, it's making, it'll make the dining room larger.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application?
What is the addition? What's going to be the height of the addition?
It's not going to be any taller than the existing house. Let's see if I can read the architectials here. Okay. Yeah, here is the addition, looking at the rear view. So it looks like the peak is going to be even with the existing peak of the house. You can see, here's the walkout from the basement, first floor, second floor, and they're matching the peaks.
You're not increasing the height of it?
Correct.
Did you say that both side yards are nonconforming? Both?
Correct. You have the single side yard is off by an inch. But you have the also requirement of the combination of the two side yards. That misses as well, because the garage, the garage in itself, you can see, is not, is within the setback. But when you add this plus this, the existing house is, meets, doesn't meet that as well.
So it's a one foot and a four foot, is that correct?
Yes, the required side yard is twenty foot. We're asking for a nineteen foot, because I believe the town goes to the nearest foot. And the total combined side yards is fifty feet. We're asking for forty-six feet.
Okay.
Okay.
I move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion at the application of... Is that right? Pretty close.
Close enough.
For, for two variances. One side yard variance, one... For, for, two variances, one side yard variance of one foot and it's a combined side yard variance of four feet. Be approved for the following reasons. This particular property is in a unique area of town, it's in a conservation zone where it's a one-acre zone, but half-acre bulk requirements are what need to be followed, which puts restraint on most of the things that you want to do there. The granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, there is no other feasible method to achieve the desired end, this is not a substantial request for variances. There have been no neighbors in opposition to this application. And you could provide us with a foundation survey prior to framing. You have six months to start and one year to finish, we should grant.
I second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm here, Lucia Piscopilo, and I'm here to represent Mr. Forni. We're requesting, seeking a variance of six feet for the purpose of installing a generator. And the reason for it is so that the generator could be located far from the house, so to prevent carbon monoxide, and so therefore we are asking a six-feet variance.
So how did you come to pick the specific location that you did for the generator? I understand you didn't want it up against the house, but how did you come to select this location?
How did we come? Well, we worked with Bruce Thompson, because we originally had put in an application and Bruce suggested that the best location would be there. And being that on that side it's wooded area, so it really does not affect any of the neighbors, so.
What fuel supply will it be?
It will be propane.
And is the location of the generator in proximity to other electrical service or?
No, it's on the side of the garage, so there is no other impact there.
Does it come into close proximity to any neighbor?
No. As I said, on that side of the property is nothing but wooded area, so yeah, it does not impact the neighbors.
And how far is it from the house?
Twelve feet.
It'd be twelve feet out from that?
Right.
Are you planning to put any shrubbery or plantings around?
No, unless it's a requirement. Because of where it's located, it really, there is no impact, so currently there are no plans of putting any shrubs.
Is it going to be visible from our court?
It's really set back and like I said, it's on the side. I guess the reason for the variance is because of the shape of the lot, of the property.
The triangle?
It's a triangle, right. So that's why it's narrow as it goes back, the front of the lot is really wide.
Does it show in this where the generator is going at all?
Yes.
Are there any windows on the side of that?
Of the garage?
Oh.
I don't believe so, no.
So, are you aware, what is the maximum or the minimal distance from the structure that the generator can be located?
I believe it's ten.
Must be set off the house
Eighteen inches.
Eighteen inches.
So it's like, two, it's a foot and a half, and you've asked for six feet.
The variance is for six feet, yes, because Bruce would not approve the original location when we submitted for the permit. He suggested that we move further from the garage.
Well, there's two variances, there's a combined side yard and then there's a regular side yard, so it looks like the regular side yard is twelve feet, is an eight-foot variance, they're looking for it eight feet off. They're looking for an eight-foot variance, twelve foot off, I don't know what the distance is from the generator to the side of the garage is the question, I guess you're asking.
She's saying it's six feet.
Six feet, but
Oh, that's what she said.
Where only two feet is required.
Why six feet?
That's the question.
I apologize, I don't know the details, I didn't
Can you describe the stone wall that we see on the plans?
Oh yeah, there's an existing
The existing stone wall is there, was there, I
How high is, approximately is that stone wall?
I'm sorry, I don't know the height of the stone wall.
Have you seen the stone wall?
I have not been on the premises, no. I mean, I could give back to you if you need to know the height of the stone wall.
Well, the stone wall could be a natural blockade, but you'd have to maintain, you know, a distance from the stone wall for serviceability of the unit.
And I apologize, I don't know. They have marked here twelve feet, but
That's unclear to me, because the stone wall could be a retaining wall and the grate could be up there, it could be on top of the wall, or it could be behind the wall. How do we, how do we know that?
We don't. We just see masonry stone wall on the site plan.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
If it's behind it is one thing, because then it's blocked from view, from view, everybody's view.
That was what prompted my question.
If it's up on top, that's another story.
In the denial letter, it just says, proposed location for the generator will be at the top and immediately rear of a small one-and-a-half-foot-high retaining wall to the left of the existing garage.
So it's at the top of the wall?
Okay. Well, to the left, it says to the top and immediately rear. I'm not sure, I don't really understand what that means. If you were to look at
The site plan.
Yeah, no, I did see the site plan, but I wasn't still, you know, is this the wall he's talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to, it's still hard to tell if he says on the top.
How, I'm just curious, how did this generator end up on a survey that was dated 1961?
I believe that's what was on file here, that it was provided to us.
It was hand-drawn on the survey.
It was hand-drawn?
Yes.
Okay.
You represent the generator company or
Yes, yeah, actually it's Baldwin Electric, yes.
Baldwin Electric, okay.
And Mr. Forni could not be here, they're away on vacation.
There are, is it typical to have three propane tanks for a generator?
Yes. There are three
A big
One-twenty gallon tanks, one-twenty gallon tanks.
Does anyone on the board feel like it would be helpful to have the applicant return with photographs of the property and particularly this side of the house?
Yeah, I think we're still questioning, are you clear on exactly where it's located in relation to this wall and the topography involved? I'm not, I don't know.
Yeah, I'd like to, I think it'd be worthwhile.
I'd also like an explanation why it has to go six feet as opposed to two feet.
Right.
Are there windows on the side of the garage that the generator is going to be placed at?
I am not aware that there are windows there, no.
If there are no windows there, then it could be put closer to the garage, because then you don't have a monoxide problem, which would move it away from the property line a little bit and make it less of a variance and still achieve the same end. Now, if it's only, if the code only requires it to be, what'd you say, eighteen inches?
Eighteen inches.
Eighteen inches off the building.
Right, there is a minimum distance to a propane tank that we'd have to adhere to, I don't know that number.
Okay, but if you, if, where I'm looking at the propane tanks on the plan, if you move the generator closer to the building, it doesn't really change the back-and-forth dimension too much.
Just wanted to point that out, that we came
Yeah, yeah, no, that's okay. But, but then it could be moved forward a tad too, maybe in front of that wall, if need be. That's why we should have some, either some pictures of what's going on there or some kind of a topo plan, rather than make a field trip just for something like this, if we can get a better idea with some photos and maybe, maybe a better idea as to how this retaining wall is acting on the property, what it's doing, that should help everybody out.
We don't know the elevations of the
No, we don't have, we don't have any elevations.
Put in half high, we don't know if the front or the back is high or low.
Right. But if there, if, just check me if I'm right or wrong, if there are no windows on the side of the garage and the generator is closer, then you're not, you're not looking for a carbon monoxide problem.
You are correct.
Yeah, so we could, if we moved it in, if it's doable
Correct.
After seeing a better idea of what's going on there, they would still get their generator and we would get a smaller variance and that would make everybody happy.
So, so I think we'd ask a couple things. Number one, if you would arrange to have photos taken of the area.
Photos of the area where the generator is going, okay?
Yes. And secondly, if in returning, you would consider whether the generator can be moved closer to the structure so that there's less intrusion into the
Okay.
Side yard.
Okay. I believe it was the suggestion of Mr. Thompson to be moved far, but as
So Mr. Thompson is in here, so we
I know, I understand.
We need also some pictures of the structure, the side of the structure
Okay.
To ascertain whether there are any windows or
Okay.
Any other openings in that
Okay. And in relation to the stone wall, what is it exactly that you're looking for?
We'd like to see the elevation difference, if we can get some dimensions.
Okay.
It's unclear which side is higher or lower, front or back, or if they're both the same and it's only just a small stone wall.
Okay.
If it's in fact a retaining wall, it's holding something back, because then if the front is higher, then the unit could go behind it and be obscured from the front view.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, all right, thank you.
Do you have a next one?
Okay, thanks.
That's it, it just needs minutes. Yeah. I move that the board adopt the meeting minutes for the May sixteenth and May, you have two meetings?
Yeah.
May sixteenth and May thirtieth meetings.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.